The minutes. Approved by the two attendees of the last meeting. Public comment, nobody is here, still nobody on Zoom, right?
Nope.
Select Board reports, Sandra.
I was gonna ask Streetlights, but that got dealt with, the Streetlight, the Bus Streetlight.
Yeah.
Where do we stand on? A select board approved ordinance for no trucks on Brookfield Road, no trucks. On North Gilbert.
Um. I don't know, I'm thinking back, didn't Brian say that there were, that was actually done? Cause he was on Zoom that night. And heard that conversation and he said, he came in to me and said, yes, they did.
So if that's the case.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, when we went to the D O T. Seminar, Elena was with us and you and I. It was, that was a question that came up, and if I remember right, they said the select board had to approve that on a yearly basis.
Oh.
I could be wrong, but I.
Elena was there.
So that's an intimate question, I guess, but. Whatever we need to do to make it happen, we should do. Because we don't need live trucks. And other big trucks speeding down North Gilbert Road. It's not, it's not safe.
And if we do need to reapprove it, there's no signage coming into town from.
From Gilbert.
Lane Avenue.
The sign we bought disappeared. It was on the back of the yield sign.
Which is on Abbott Town side.
Well, yeah, but it's.
But it has to be at the beginning of the road.
Right.
But it was, it was a fix there, we were coming back from the MMA conference and I said to Sue, let's go this way and I'll show you where the sign is and. Sign is gone. So.
So we want to know what we need to do.
Yeah.
To be able to.
To enforce it because it's just, you know, I know it's a longer way around, but. There've been too many near misses on that road.
Are you planning to just slow down?
Well, that's the other thing, speed limit adjustment, cause remember we moved the speed limit signs? And we weren't supposed to do that either.
Did we move, we moved them?
We moved one, we moved the thirty five so that it was. Farther out North Gilbert, to slow people down before they got to the area where your house is and where Morgan lives.
Where it used, it used to be, and then some, I don't know what happened to it, and we, we said, because it's a residential area.
Yeah.
We needed a sign coming into town.
Right.
Yeah.
We need to sort it out, there's a bunch of issues traffic wise there, so. And we need to do it right.
Yeah, we need, definitely, yeah, we, let's make sure we're doing it right, but that, I mean, there always was a speed limit sign there.
It was, but I think we relocated it out further, to slow them down.
Got you.
Okay, so.
And we are clear about what needs to happen here?
And it seems like there's something else, but I can't remember what it is, so pass to, so.
Oh, well, I'm just. Checking the town website, which I haven't done in a week or so. So I was wondering, there's a few things that probably on, under the residence. Municipal government side that we could update, I was thinking it'd be nice to have Bill's name on there first of all. But maybe even, like, I don't know if we want to consider, some towns have very brief profiles of. You know, the town manager and even select board members. But it would be nice to let people know when they go here where town manager is now. And what was my other? It was under select board, oh, under select board meetings. Could we add a digital version of our rules of order on here? And again, the. Retired teacher and the, you know, just like a little civics lesson for folks that. You know, don't know what goes on in a select board meeting, what our, our town government structure is. But, you know, like rules of order, so before they even come to the meeting, you can see this is how we kind of operate. So it'd be nice to have, now that we have nice shiny new website to have that information on.
Jade's doing most of the website updates, is that correct? Yes, so she's gonna have a lot on her plate with all these little tweaks that we made, but.
But it'll be, yeah, just to kind of update them.
Yeah.
All right. On J S. Were they able to confirm when the updates should be available?
No, need to do that.
Will that cause the tax maps to update? The owner's name and address?
That's what I'm asking about.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah. The timeline for an updated surplus months, and I think you said at the, I actually forget what he said.
So do I.
Really need to have it prior to the next. Budget meeting. Okay, so for next week, yeah. And then on the, in the N R C M. Something, I don't, I've seen. Do they tell when, or tell you when they expect to make the work?
No, so I did get, yeah, that grant for two thousand dollars, did submit that in R C M, but there wasn't a timeline given, so I'll need to follow up. See, see what their thinking is.
And then I just sent, sent an email this afternoon, but did, did Kim from Axiom ever respond to her email?
Well, I'm gonna need to get on the carousel that Jade's been, right, and trying to coordinate. Consolidated as the polls, and there's a bit of rigmarole going for what we need to submit for an application to pay them to do an assessment on, on the poll. That was reached a. Frustrating level for Jade in the way it was being bounced, bounced around, and I'm not sure how we're gonna crack, crack that juggernaut. I think the consensus in the office, we were talking, is there any way we can, any other place we can put that antenna than on a consolidated?
Yeah, it really is.
What's the issue?
Oh, my gosh. It's been going on for so long, well, it was, first, do we, do we have an agreement, so we do have an agreement already? And it was gonna be.
Heard this story.
Yeah. We would need to pay for the agreement, but then there was some argument, well, we already have an agreement, so we've already paid, and then they decided we didn't have to have to pay. And then it got to. About insurance, whether it was a five million dollar policy or two million dollar policy, and so the, our MMA insurance people are involved too. And Jade even tried putting them in contact with each other to try to let them sort it out.
And it got more.
And it got more convoluted and came back to her, and I, I mean, I can't even remember all the details, I can go get her if you want, but I, I said, Jade, you need to let this go, you're gonna end up just like me. So, yeah, it's just been one thing after another and misunderstandings, and then somebody sent, somebody something with a, a speed sign on the back. So then for a while, they were talking with us as if this was about a speed sign going on the pole, and then finally she was like, wait, what's the sign, what are we talking about? So then that got all straightened out, and I, it just goes on and on. And on, it's, it's been.
Your offices are just fabulous, aren't they?
Yep.
Well, so where we left things off, they had said your insurance was fine.
Yes, it was fine, and now it's a matter of, do you remember, there's some whole new thing, just because it's a note. And I don't know the exact details of that. But Jade is right out there, if, if you want to have more detail, I'm sure she could provide it.
And does it need to go on consolidated poll to, just for a power source, or is it going on for, for antenna place, placement? It doesn't need to tap into consolidated lines, it's just.
We're just noting their electricity.
And the poll. And maybe I'm revisiting an old discussion, but was there talk of putting it on some other poll that we have in town that might be like municipally owned or?
We're all, we don't own polls. Look, this is like three years in the making.
I'm sorry. No, no, and I got it, when Jade handed me the, with serious frustration.
Yeah.
And it seemed to me that it was consolid, consolidated seems to be the, the crux of the.
Yeah, when, when, when premium choice is putting fiber, running fiber. The longest and most complex part of that whole process is getting permission to screw the fiber lines to the pole, this is.
Right.
This is industry norm.
No, exactly, that's why I go on, this is one, this is one antenna.
Probably two, two nodes, yeah.
Because what I think of this application that we submit, which was four hundred and fifty dollars per pole.
Well, that's what we don't have to pay, but, oh, right, and now there is a bunch of money involved because of, because of it.
Yeah, and you have to tell them which one you want, and then they do the assessment, so assuring that you.
Yeah, municipalities have the right to use polls, so you just gotta jump around, so we just need to jump through the doors. And yeah, they're gonna say which polls, and we're gonna say, I don't know, because we need Axiom to tell us which polls.
And there was some question when we brought it up, when I thought we were really making some good progress and about the survey, so apparently that's before the installation. We weren't sure if they were gonna do their survey before or after, but.
The survey is to determine which poll?
Or to just come and just look at the poll and compare it to what we want to do, because they wanted sketches and, and everything and kinds of stuff.
So, right.
So I guess we actually, it's, Axiom needs to tell us which poll the antenna is gonna work on, but then we have to ask permission through consolidated.
Yeah. Yeah.
This seems like a very simple thing.
It's really, yeah.
I can't believe it's.
So you know, you got people that are paid to just get in the way, right?
Yes, no, it seemed, yes, that's why I said poll empowered, almost seemed like one of those things when Steve and I were out taking down the garlands.
Oh, and you missed the poll up here by the quarry.
We did?
Yeah.
I noticed that this morning.
Sorry, when we were.
So we've been paying Axiom?
No, we've never paid Axiom.
Right, okay. All right, how?
There's a grant.
There was a grant, okay.
It was a grant, and then we were supposed to pay, and the system never really worked the way that it was supposed to, and so we said, no, we're not paying.
So once we get it working, we're gonna have to pay.
I'm happy to pay for our working. For the last two years, Marty's been laying in her bed at night being like, we didn't pay, we didn't pay that.
Why is the services, if it's broke and you can't fix it? Premium Choice is a different story.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're happy to pay that one.
Yeah, Axiom was pulling your reports, they were being like, look, the data says that ten thousand people are using your system last week, and we were like, it's February.
Yeah, right.
And nobody's used the system last.
Right, because it doesn't work.
The whole thing is chaos, but anyway, we can, this, yeah, we gotta just shoot, shoot the gap here and figure out what we need to do to glue those things to those balls. Which balls?
That's what I was getting.
Balls and, yes.
Seems so simple.
No, no, exactly, but. Bypassing consolidated seemed to me to be the.
Best, then they win, Bill, then they win.
You got to be a thorn in their butt.
Yeah, if it weren't to me, we would, we would have screwed these things so close years ago, not told anybody.
Jade's not horny enough.
Yeah.
Nor am I.
Yeah, no.
We don't want to suggest that sort of thing at a purpose meeting.
It's too late now, everybody's got their eyes on it. Anyway, that's the mandate. And then just to say, so I think after, after budget will, will be in the April meeting, we should do a check, like an exec session check in.
Okay.
And our return manager. Those are through the gauntlet. And that was it for me.
Your turn, Bill. Got your report here. Did everybody receive the report?
I did.
First question, because we appear to still have continued problems with our server not being recognized. So apparently, you know.
I'm here somewhere, there it is.
Emails were going into. But yes, I did last week decide to. Pick up on, on instructed dialogue around following contract. All of the issues with sanding and plumbing.
Were there some complaints or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as well as I had concerns.
Okay. Think, are you able to share like what, what was going on, the, the concerns?
We needed to have sand applied when our emergency trucks were out, sure, it's part of. Emergency vehicles meeting requests was not fulfilled.
Oh, okay.
That was pretty serious.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
But you, you feel like it's gonna be solved?
Uh, it needs to be more dialogue.
Okay.
Yes. So. Requested any meeting, and we'll see if that happens, there were some adjustments in what was happening after I spoke to Steve. Spoke as well.
Okay.
The contractor, I'm not sure if you all were fielding questions or concerns as well, but.
No, not this season, yeah.
Yeah.
I, it's been pretty quiet on my end, usually, last winter, it's getting calls, but.
Well, yeah.
But I haven't been out and about either, to.
Signed the contracts with D O T and for the lease purchase with the understocking bank. Both of those.
I did, we, did we, I don't recall ever discussing what term we wanted with understocking.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did. Speak to, that they gave us three year, the Johnson Co proposed, gave us a three year, five point one, was it five point one one?
Yeah.
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 But in the, the, I'm just trying to understand the process, because what, what's happening before is they gave us a, gave us a table of options, and we decide which one to use. Did that happen this time? We haven't, we haven't met since the. Meeting after the town meeting, I think that was last time.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Can't remember how that dialogue went.
I kind of thought that, that it was kind of agreed that the three year as well, or maybe we were to find out, I knew we were gonna find out, we were waiting to find out information on what the deal would be with the three year.
Cause leading up to this, up to the town meeting, we had a discussion about, oh, okay, so this is giving the select board, or the, the chair and the treasurer, the authority to choose the finance term, and we had. There was some information going around about some different options, but we never actually said like, okay, so let's decide on, on an option here. We didn't, we would have done that, and if that had happened, it would have happened in the last select board meeting.
Yeah, I don't recall ever making a decision.
I was just looking at minutes, I, would date, would that have been February ninth?
No, the one afterwards, the twenty third.
Twenty third, yeah. That was in that one, so.
So anyway, did we get a range of options, or did he say this is?
Well, we had the one option that he provided. To Elena, in fact, in February.
Five here and possibly something else too, and we were interested in finding out what the three year one was, for sure. They provided that. But I think it's been going further than that.
As I thought, Elena and I presented. That info to you. The last.
Are you thinking of what was prepared?
Just the bond meetings that were put in that, that.
This is the only thing I saw having to do with the numbers, though. I don't think that we did see it.
There was a informal quote. And then there was a discussion about, yes, we'd like to see, actually, the, even before all this was like, hey, yeah, we'd like to. In order to decide what to do, we wanted to see the options, and we, we never really had like a, okay, but.
No.
Well, I haven't seen what we should do, but anyhow, the docs are signed, the docs are signed, but I, I still would like to see what they were offering for the, the range. And then same thing with the, with the actual financing amount.
I need to.
The financing amount? Like, this could just be.
Oh, even, oh, yeah.
Did the word article say how much is gonna be financed and how much is gonna be taken out of the reserve, or did it just say, authorize the expenditure, and then there would be?
No, it was, it was, this much, every year, and this much will be financed.
Yeah, it's sixty six thousand.
Yeah.
And then finance.
Okay. Sorry, I find anything I didn't know I had deep in my pocket, paperwork, no, no money.
So what does Matt have to say about the next steps here?
Matt Ross?
Yeah.
So. They just sent the paperwork with the terms that we said with the study in thirty four. And. That we needed to finalize that with him, and now we can, now we can do the contract with. With.
So we can get that moving fairly quickly, yes? Times kind of.
Right.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else you wanted to discuss in any greater detail here?
Uh, the compactor is pretty, pretty important piece that. Uh, gotta fix on that for the electric panel, which is not proper piece, electric panel that was on there, which is probably why the compact didn't, not been functioning. You know, well, uh, so electrician didn't really great fast work, and got a proper sized panel in there, the previous one was literally melting. Uh, with the connectors, and his recommendation is that we look into. Uh, either buying new motor, or at least knowing the availability of the motor. And at that point, we're two thirds of the way to a new compactor, which probably greatly extends the life, so. Uh, it was clearly for that electric panel not being properly. sized. Would may, would may greatly extend the life of the compactor, which was.
Yeah, I, I spoke to him about it as well, and asked him that, and he said that, yeah, it, it was, excuse me, buy some time. But there are some, some rust issues, and there are hydraulics and things like that, so I'm just working on trying to find some, some kind of pricing for a new one, just to have. And, you know, maybe make it a capital plan or something like that. Jim feels, I think, kind of strongly that it's lived its life, but it is, you know, it does seem like these repairs that, that were made will make a big difference and, and definitely buy us some time.
So is he happier since the new panel went in, do you think?
Yeah, yeah, he, he tends to be a little, little, um. Um, where do I want to use here?
Happy is probably not the emotional.
Not, not, just kind of level, even keel, go up, go down, just very.
Then that's good.
He wants that compactor to compact when he puts the switch.
However, if he was unhappy, we would definitely.
So I'm gonna say he's happy.
That, that's what I was going for. Sounds like he's okay.
All right.
I just, I'm looking at my emails, because, you know, you think you, you had that information somewhere back on the, the plow truck. Uh, February ninth email, um, that we were trying to schedule the, the special town meeting, and, and Bill had mentioned at the end of, of, uh, an email there. Zach recommended, including the bond information that you wanted, the least, least purchased option we will recommend would be for a shorter period, probably five years, with no early. Hate penalty. And will incur less interest, so that was the only thing that, only piece I could find, um, that was February nine. So I'm not that. Oh, I'm sorry, I should have had this on my list to do, but I can't write with my left hand, I go to do something, it's still laborious. Um, can we add on future agendas, like an item for code enforcement, just to kind of update us and, and?
I do have reports there for you all, sorry.
They do.
They're under.
Okay, sorry.
Good intention, Sandra.
All right, and then we, the other item was to add is, just so we don't forget, like, um, because we're meeting just monthly now, it's like a budget, uh, year to date, you can have a report.
You have it, the year budget stuff.
Where?
The budget stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, but I was like ordinarily.
Right, yeah, I was corrected politely, but Bill, that you actually have that information.
Right, right, but I'm just like, going forward.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I would just like to confirm, um, that it's, because I know he mentioned in there the, um. Using the ARPA, some of the ARPA funds to just pay Steve for some time that was missed when he was out with COVID, I just want to confirm that it's all good to just put that in next week's payroll.
I don't have any issue to pay it, but I, did we already spend our family?
No, no, we have balance. We had sixty eight, we received sixty nine thousand two hundred and fifty eight. Dollar seventy two cents, we've, it's been fifty five thousand two hundred and eighty with a premium and the EV charging. And the wages fully burdened with the Spirit America will be twenty three ninety seven. For a total of fifty seven thousand six seventy seven ninety one. Leaving a balance of our eleven thousand five hundred and eighty. Did you spend money on that, anything else?
No, no, but I just thought that we spent it all as part of, of a meeting, and we just had, so you're saying that for the, for the.
Received.
Village, sorry?
Yeah.
For the village partnership, we did not use the ARPA money for that?
No, the. No, the village partnership is not up a match, the only two that were ARPA, were the EV chargers. And.
I have a chance.
Everything else was being spent out there.
Yeah, yeah.
D O T.
And the ARPA thing is, we don't actually, we, we don't have to go to town meetings, right?
No, um, just given the fact that the fifty thousand dollars was such a large sum.
Yeah.
Everybody just kind of thought it would be the decent thing.
Yeah, no, exactly.
And so while we were there, we threw in the EV chargers as well, to ask for that, so.
Okay, yeah, no objections here.
Okay.
Okay.
That was thinking again.
No, I was just looking to see if there are any other, um. What I was thinking about, it's just about like, do you vote on this? I guess it's really just a warrant. It would just be a warrant applicable.
What, for, the, the payroll thing, yeah, right.
Okay.
Cause that's, that's really what it was intended for, and, you know, a lot of times. Um, and some towns I know paid after being out, we did not, he didn't want without a paycheck for three weeks, and then. Had a couple of other random days, um, so normally what would have happened, I think, is an employee would have been paid by the town, and then this money sort of reimburses the town.
Yeah.
For that. We just did backwards.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I didn't thought on the agenda. We're gonna break her off here. Committee reports, committee, committee, committee chair, Sandra.
Um, yeah, committee, committee. Well, rec committee met last night, yeah, they moved right along, but.
Yeah, so, sorry, um. We should have. Them either attend a meeting moving forward or submit a report, I guess.
Yeah. They're, they're, um, becoming organized, put it that way. Beautification actually met, and we are. Talking about a sculptor project. But I already say this at the last meeting, I did, okay, that was. Okay, what I said when, when I had, so nothing new for beautification, fine, that's it.
All right. No old business or new business on the agenda? Shall we adjourn?
Excuse me.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay.
Three O, you need, you need unanimous, that's the way.
So all the store expense comes out.